I'm losing track of where my seat is. I guess we'll be here in eight.
Were you there?
Yes, I was.
Oh, I'm not seeing it. See, I can't see her right now.
Rosetta. I'm going to have to be a key. Where are your...
But did you...
The administrators here at the residence, right? Can J.C. help you?
The administrators?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. No, there's actually no reason. Couldn't... When it goes out to everybody, uh...
I just thought to follow along tonight and give them like...
Sure, absolutely. Although, what will you do if you... She said something about following along, but then she won't have...
Hey, woman. I got some question about, uh, the first two or three resolutions.
Are these, uh...
Yeah, the acting, the secondary. And I don't know if you saw bills, response, but he... It's like we're trying to get these things done. I talked to J.C. and I said, "Do you ever reference about whether these positions were made open until you got here so that you can make that appointment?" And he said he would prefer to wait.
Would you guys mind if we shake the door for our last gentleman?
We have no chief educational, Elementary Education, which is... Well...
I'm sure they've been functioning well and...
You're welcome to, um, a motion to table.
Favorite.
About table one, take it to the side.
All right. We may be able to give them an opportunity to talk about... Three more minutes.
A motion to withdraw or a motion to...
Thank you, guys, yeah.
If you wanted to go to James, you want a motion to withdraw, we'll discuss that.
Meeting of the Board of Education is hereby convened. Please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to be led by Ms. Rosetta Washington. The moment of silence is in honor of Isabel Hernandez, a 33-year employee of the City School District that passed away November 10th, and a pioneer leader in the Hispanic community, Ramon Padilla, whose daughter, Nidia Padilla, is an employee of the district and whose other daughter, Nancy Padilla, was the longtime president of the Board of Education. Ms. Rosetta Washington.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are, sometime during the meeting, there will be a couple of people up here. They are two sign language interpreters from RIT, Ms. Karen Bush and Boucher and Ms. Jean Ratman. And they will be here in front, so don't let that, you know, distract you from the meeting. They will be interpreting parts of the meeting to students from RIT who will be attending. First item on the agenda is the approval acceptance of the minutes of October 18, 2007. I'll enter their motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Be none or hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is our speakers addressing an agenda item. And we have one, Mr. Danny, Daniel de Clemente from Bente Union. Dan.
On behalf of the support staff, we extend our heartfelt thanks to President Garcia, Commissioner Thompson, and Dr. Kala for their dedication to the children of the Rochester City School District. And we look forward to working with Commissioners Campos and Williams and Mr. Jean Claude Bressard as the new superintendent of schools. My name is Dan DiClemente, president of Bente. And we are here tonight to set the record straight for Commissioner Elliott, who misinformed the public at the October board meeting when she stated that secretaries are overpaid and that she, quote, "has a problem with paying predominantly white females that kind of money." Over 170 secretaries that work for the district are minorities, all are hired from a civil service list. And just like any other employee in the district, some have higher salaries based on the cost of living increases they've received throughout their 10, 20, some 30 years of dedicated service. A starting clerk typist makes less than $13,000 hours a year. A clerk three makes a little over $14,000 hours to start. A clerk two pulls in a whopping $16,000 hours annually. And with the new software systems and technological advances instituted in this district over the past few years, a head secretary is nothing short of a rocket scientist for 14:28 an hour. Your average clerical worker is responsible for answering the phones, distributing mail, student attendance, student records, special education compliance, bookkeeping, purchasing, budget, consultant contracts, student activity funds, payroll, and transportation. She also wears a cape and is able to leave tall buildings in a single bound. Commissioner Elliott's salary totals $21,725 a year for serving part-time on the board. She makes more money than many of the full-time clerical workers that she states are overpaid. And they work for the public the same way that she does with one big exception. The clerical staff are required to remain professional at all times, treating the public, the people they work for, and the people who work for them with courtesy and respect. The fact that Commissioner Elliott dismisses the importance of the clerical staff tells me how often she stepped into a school to see them welcome a parent, or wipe a child's nose, or comfort a student, or come through for the principal. Instead of commending the clerical staff for being vital contributors to the overall operation of the district, she continually attacks them publicly by using inequitable comparisons, inaccurate information, and false stereotypes. The late, great Dr. Martin Luther King wished for a day when we would live in a nation where people would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Well, from the moment that parents and students are greeted with a smile in the morning to the time that every last child has left the school, secretaries exemplify the character of the entire building and no one, not even you, Commissioner Elliott, can put a price tag on that. In conclusion, a member of the Board of Education should set the example for equal treatment in the workplace, not teach children that it's okay to disrespect their elders, or to pit one group against another, or to treat anyone differently because of their race or occupation. Not all of these kids are destined to become doctors, or principals, or board members. Some will grow up to become their secretaries. And no matter what the race, color, or creed, they deserve the chance to earn a living, to make enough money to feed their families, to clothe their children, to purchase a home, to hopefully be able to scrimp, scrounge, and scrape up enough money to send their kids to college one day. So Commissioner Elliott, the next time you feel it necessary to go on one of your ill-conceived rants about who's overpaid in this district, we have one simple request: Leave the clerical staff out of it.
It will happen again tonight. It will happen tonight. You can believe that. Now, Mr. Comlenteng, if you want to talk to me as I called you to talk to you, we can do that. But I'm still going to say what I need to say.
Commissioner Elliott. Next. We will go on with the meeting, please. Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner Elliott. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kala, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. This past week, we were able to visit Freddie Thomas that has a new family mentoring program. It's something that we put together with Dr. Bruce Gilberg, a psychologist in the city of Rochester, who has also assembled the G2 program in three of our elementary schools. And the family mentoring program consists of 40 adults in the Freddie Thomas community who work with Mitch Thomas and who are mentoring families of the students of Freddie Thomas. So it's a really, it's a very different approach, rather than just mentoring children, mentoring their entire families. So we're very proud of this and we're going to keep track of the kids' progress over the years. We're going to do longitudinal studies with this. And hopefully, its success will enable us to spread this to other schools. Two weeks ago, we were able also to observe the Rights of Passage program, which is a program at John Marshall High School. And we've had discussion on the dais about the contract, I think, with Rights of Passage here. And Rights of Passage is a program designed for 7th grade students to improve their attendance. It's headed up by Hussein Ahmed from the Center for Change. And again, it's a program that is to boost kids' self-esteem, to get them involved in the community. The guest speaker for this first meeting of Rights of Passage was NFL, past NFL player, Tony Jordan. We're very pleased with the Mayor's Literacy Initiative. He announced this initiative two weeks ago at the Sully Library on Bay Street. And we're very pleased that they took as their guiding principles goals that we've been striving for for some time now with the school district. The major, one of the major goals is the complete implementation, full implementation of pre-K. So we're pleased that they've taken this initiative. And we hope to work together to make this a reality and that we have 100% literacy among our children. Speaking of pre-K, I am on the governor's children's cabinet and am the leader of the pre-K initiative. And we've had several meetings across the state. And we will be making recommendations to the governor for budget priorities. And those budget priorities will be for at least some portion of all-day pre-K and for the aidability of pre-K transportation. We have several other recommendations as well, but those are the two most important and which will have the most, the greatest impact upon getting full implementation of pre-K in Rochester schools as well as along the state. Let's see. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't welcome Jean Claude to our fold. And I give you my warm wishes, sincere hope that your tenure is long and that it will be in the name of the benefit of our children. So welcome.
Any questions for Dr. Kala?
Hope not.
There'll be none, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, standing committee reports. We'll start with a student representative report, Ms. Washington.
Good evening. As you all know, I represent the Student Leadership Congress, which is a bunch of students from the district. We get together and we change things in the community. Our fundraiser that we started last month is known as the Winter Warmth. We are fundraising gloves, hats, coats, thermos, mittens. I passed out to all the board members a flyer. They're all over your schools, they should be anyways. These items, once they're collected, they will be distributed to the less fortunate. So this is something that we wanted to get together and do so we can give back to our community. We have got in contact with Alberta Ma. She is helping us to fundraise all of this. We have boxes for donations in schools such as Jefferson School Without Walls, Freddie Thomas, Wilson Commitment and Foundation, the School of Arts, and three of the, two of the three schools at Franklin, Monroe, and also Charlotte. There's also a box in Central Office on the first floor in the lobby if you would like to donate stuff. So if you have grandchildren or other kids in your household that you know of who can't or they grew out of their stuff, even if yourself, please donate that to us. We would graciously appreciate it. Also, in February, we are meeting with the mayor. So the mayor is interested in Student Leadership Congress. He wants to know our ideas and he wants our inputs on things in the community. So we have been getting a lot of media coverage. And our next meeting will be December 5th. So if you know any interested students who look like future leaders, please let them know. December 5th, Central Office, flyers will be posted. You can also check out on the Rochester City School District webpage. We have a site where many meetings are posted and you can check out pictures. Also, we have a partnership with school number 22 with Reach Students. Reach is a program for students who need a little bit of extra help. They're 5th and 6th graders. We have about 18 students who we mentor. So we have a mentoring program. And our next meeting will focus on that. So please spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Commissioner Brennan didn't leave a report to anyone, right? So the next report will be Commissioner Elliott.
President Garcia, the Board Governors Committee met early in the week to discuss board staff issues. And we are in the process of looking at evaluations of the board staff. That was something that we had not done in a while. And we're looking at what kind of training opportunities our staff needs and also what kind of, we discussed the issue of salaries enhancements and those kinds of things. And we will be interviewing them sometimes over the next couple of weeks. And also to talk with them about some of the issues that they may see on a regular basis. We're not here all the time. So it gives us some more input. And also to talk about how that they can assist in the operation of our goals for next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Elliott? There'll be none. Commissioner Evans.
The Board Governors Committee will meet December 4th. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the folks that made the superintendent forums successful. Production directors from the Communications Department, Todd Hall and Tom Mohan; the camera operators from our Communications Departments, Sam Cursado, who was our Spanish translator from Charlotte High School; Tim Sheehan, who did audiovisual; and a volunteer, Luis Nung Hall; our four student interns who were also involved in the production, Brandon Appleberry from School Without Walls; King Swink from Marshall High School; Sarah Delos from Wilson-Magnon High School; John Famani from Monroe Community College; and from our MIS Department, Pat Mohan, network supervisor; Raphael Gahn, a network supervisor; and also Angelo Parmenari, the telephone technician; and from East High School, Ann Scott, who's the secretary who operated the call-in phone line; James Fitter, who's the teacher; and Tom Murphy, the custodian; our student rep, Rosetta Washington, who helped us with questions; and last but not least, our board staff, who put in four nights in a row, Jackie Morgan, Joanne Feen, Linda Dunsmore, and Hazel Washington. Thank you all for your hard work. And again, CIGI will meet December 4th. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Power.
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, November 20th, and reviewed the October 2007 financial reports and the student activity reports, the resolutions 329 through 340 and 344 through 349. We also met on Wednesday, that was yesterday, November 28th, to specifically go through the budget amendments and supplement that was provided to us this month. For those who don't follow along regularly, we adopt our budget in the spring. But because of Contract for Excellence, it was such a significant change in so many line items of the budget that the board asked for a supplement that would bring us up to date with what the spending plan looked like today, that being considerably different with regard to Contract for Excellence dollars. And we asked all the questions that came up after reviewing the supplement and voted to forward the budget amendment resolutions, which were resolutions 341 through 343. So everything from resolutions 329 through 349 have been reviewed by the Finance Committee and have the endorsement of the Finance Committee. Our next meeting is Thursday, December 13th, 5:30 p.m. All are welcome. It is an open meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Garcia. I apologize...
Excuse me a second. Yes, the finance report, financial reports. Generally, this is the time when I ask, I move that the board receive the monthly financial reports.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we also have the student activity report, is that right? This month? I move that we receive the student activity report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Even more than second, or in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Certainly. I apologize for my lateness. I'm heading out of town tonight to celebrate my birthday and had to put some things in place at work. The Quality Assurance Committee met on Monday, November 19th. We discussed the 2006-2007 end-of-year accountability report and the final report for Project 2006. The 2007, 2006-07 accountability report included information on New York State testing in English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science. The data also included attendance and suspension figures. Information was provided for grades 3 through 8. And the data on grades 9 to 12 is expected in December. All of this information has been provided to date and has been sent to the full board. I'm not going to try to summarize the information here. It was far too complicated. I will try to capture the salient points of our discussion, some of which will sound very familiar. They were, "We need to focus on replicating successful programs and initiatives while being careful of a one-size-fits-all approach." "The sheer demographics of some schools puts them in much greater peril of meeting performance standards." "We should look at equitably distributing our special education and English Language learner students so that those students and our schools can be successful." And finally, the board should continue discussing how it can best advocate at the state and federal level for the benefits of our students in the district and expand our current efforts. Project 2006 is a group of students that the board began tracking when those students entered 9th grade for the first time in 2002. Just a hair less than 54% of the students in that group graduated in four years. Another 25% are still in district schools and have not yet graduated. The report distilled several considerations regarding our students that have been discussed by QA over the years, including the effects that grade retention, suspension, and attendance have on our students' prospects for graduation. These are large issues, and I'm working with QA members to define a focus for quality assurance so that it can impact student achievement through policy recommendations, advocacy, and closer collaborations with the other board committees. Quality Assurance's next meeting is on Monday, December 10th. Our agenda includes discussion of the district's professional development plan and a report on the closing of Frederick Douglass. That meeting will begin at 6 p.m. and as usual, everyone is welcome to attend. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Elliott.
President Garcia, I attended the QA meeting. And one of the things that came out of that, that was a part of the discussion, had to do around special education and students under review and the resources that come as a result of those labels. And the discussion had to do with the fact, are we mislabeling people just to receive money? That was a part of the discussion. And, you know, I think that as a board going forward, we really have to do some analysis if that, if that may be a case. There was also some discussion that talked about parents wanting their children to be labeled because there's extra money that they received as well. So that discussion went on not only in the QA but Finance Committee. And we have to do some analysis of that whole, that whole genre, if you will, I think.
If I could make a comment, Commissioner? Yes, just for information purposes, anything that the committees want to bring up to the board has to go through an official voting process. up to the board has to go through an official voting process at the committee level. So, I expect in the future that that will come up. Dr. Cala?
As I, I think I mentioned in the last update, we're looking at a complete examination and study of special education, which I think will address all of these issues, I know will address all of these issues.
Thank you. Commissioner White? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Power had a question.
It was actually a comment. The conversation did repeat itself in the Finance Committee last night. However, the one thing that became, did come out that isn't, hasn't been articulated yet is that at least the board, perhaps not individual staff members, understand that any incremental increase in aid we get for special ed is more than offset by the cost of delivering that special ed. So, it is of no particular benefit to the district to over-identify special needs students. If there is a perception out there by persons making that identification, let us quickly dispel such a myth.
Commissioner White and Commissioner Thompson?
I was just going to say, I've had the blessing to participate in QA's meeting on this issue. Finance and Managed Choice covered this issue. So, the citizens of this community should understand that the board is very serious about this issue of particularly African-American young men being misdiagnosed or mislabeled as special ed. And I know the superintendent is on that issue. I know our new superintendent will be on that issue as well. So, folks should know, we are looking at this issue at a number of different levels.
Commissioner Thompson?
That's all right. Thank you.
Then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which will be the consideration of resolutions.
Commissioner White's report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You do have a report.
Well, it's very brief. This is the first time in many months we have not, audit has not met. We're scheduling a meeting. I know, and this is around here somewhere. It'll be sometime in December and we will let you know when that is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a member of the committee, so I didn't mean. Consideration of resolutions, we will consider Resolutions 301 through 328. I'll entertain a motion to approve those resolutions, please.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly moved. Then second, any questions?
Mr. President?
Commissioner White?
I forwarded a question and again, I want to appreciate, recognize the superintendent's staff for providing a very thorough and comprehensive answers to our questions. I had asked the questions with respect to Resolutions 301, 302, 303, and 305, whether the timing was appropriate to approve these resolutions. Mr. President, I don't want anything that I say to be misconstrued. I have had the blessing and opportunity to work with Cheryl Holloway, Connie Leach, Sherri Armstrong, and Nicole Crocker. They are competent, capable, caring district officials. However, I have tried to make the point that I think these critical positions, Associate Chief of Elementary Education, Associate Chief of Secondary Education, Assistant Director of Research Evaluation and Testing, and finally, Program Administrator for Parent and Community Involvement, these resolutions ought to be done while J.C. Bizard is Superintendent. I think these are critical positions and again, no disrespect intended to Dr. Cala, who has done an awesome job as interim superintendent. And quite frankly, that cannot be said enough. However, we want to give our new superintendent every opportunity to leave his fingerprint on the new administration and how they move forward. I have had the opportunity to speak to Jean-Claude Bizard about this. He has indicated he would prefer, if he had the opportunity, to make these appointments. I am asking therefore that, I'm making a motion, rather, Mr. President, that we table these for a month, perhaps giving Dr. Cala and Mr. Bizard an opportunity to talk about these particular employees and what the superintendent believes they can offer to Mr. Bizard.
Motion to table has priority. There is no discussion. So, I'm just going to call a roll vote for the motion to table.
Does it need a second?
It does need a second. That motion does need a second. Is there a second? Fine. So, the motion dies. Commissioner White, but let me just make a comment related to the statement that you just made. These appointments are part of a restructuring that was approved by the board some time ago. Not to make those appointments now mean, will means that these positions will remain vacant for God knows how long again, to the detriment of the children who are being serviced by these individuals. I think that Mr. Bizard, once he comes in as a superintendent, has a choice to replace these individuals if he feels that they are not performing according to his standards. However, not to approve these positions will be detrimental to the process of reorganization that we approved and we insisted that Dr. Cala immediately implement when he came on board. Any other comments?
President Garcia?
Commissioner Elliott?
Let me, let me just strongly agree with you, and you know, that doesn't happen very often.
Yes, it doesn't.
But I certainly agree with, with you on this, that we have taken, we have directed the current superintendent to clean house, to clean central office. The current superintendent has done that. And then to go behind him and to, and to talk to the, to the incoming superintendent to say that that's what he said is just really irresponsible. We have, we have, we have never, in my 35 years being involved in this community, had the kind of encouragement in this district that this current superintendent has brought. And then to try to undo what he has started, I think is irresponsible on our part.
Well, I don't disagree. I disagree with that part, but I, I'm glad that she agrees with me.
That's normal.
I, I just, I simply, I simply, I simply think that, that this is important for us to, to allow this process to continue. I think it will be beneficial to Mr. Bizard when he comes, when he comes on board.
Can we call the question?
I'll call the question. Commissioner Power has something to say.
Well, thank you for withdrawing.
You're welcome.
I withdraw my call to question.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I just want to say that had the motion been, a motion to withdraw, I would have seconded it for courtesy's sake, just to make sure that we could have the conversation we're having right now. But I didn't on procedural grounds because tabling the discussion requires that we bring these issues back to the table next month. That doesn't solve the problem because Mr. Bizard does not join us until January. So, I appreciate what you had to say. I appreciate that it deserves dialogue and I just want to share with you that you kind of caught me in a technicality here.
Mr. President, I hope the president will not end dialogue after Commissioner Elliott's remarks. I just, I do want to respond because the record should be clear. As the current superintendent knows, I sent an email two weeks ago about this very subject. So, this isn't something that comes from behind people's backs, that you shouldn't buy the hype. That's not true. Additionally, as Superintendent Cala will tell you, I spoke to him before I even spoke to J.C. Bizard about this issue and he told me he hadn't had a chance to speak to Mr. Bizard about the subject. I then went and spoke to Mr. Bizard because I do believe, as we should treat Dr. Cala fairly, and I have done that since I've been on this board, that we should treat other people fairly. We should lead by example. And so, I tried to give Mr. Bizard the courtesy and the consideration that I would want if I were stepping into the job, the very same courtesy and consideration that I and other members of this board have extended to Dr. Cala. Thank you, Mr. President.
We are, we are then going to vote on these motions, on these resolutions.
I have questions? Are we voting on the?
You are within your right to ask questions. If you have a question that needs to be answered, go ahead and ask.
Yes. In reference to the, there are some resolutions, 309, 308, 309, 310, 315, that amends the resolutions in order to delete the resignations. Is that some protocol or exactly, is it, is it specific to the employee or why are we?
Dr. Cala has designated Ms. Ufrida to respond.
Resolutions 308 and 309 are to change tenure dates of probationary assignments. We see this rather frequently and this has to do with somebody who may have started in a long-term substitute position, which is subsequently converted to a probationary position. They then get credit for the prior time served toward tenure. So, this is an adjustment in the tenure date. That's 308 and 309. You also had a question about 315?
That's correct.
315, we had an individual who submitted a resignation and then decided to withdraw her resignation and this is the board's, a board motion asking to delete that earlier resignation. And I think there might be another resolution for her as well, this individual.
Thank you.
But these are, these are very individual. They, they're as a result of individuals who either their plans change or their status changes and we have to go back and make some adjustments.
And I have, I have two other questions, but this, the one is for Resolution 318, President Garcia, where in one resolution, we have 40 pages that are into one resolution and it makes it difficult if I wanted to vote no on that. So, I say this to my colleagues, this is something that we're going to have to push back on because the way that this, these resolutions are formatted does not allow for, for the board to do their due diligence and oversight of this. And so, I have some concern about that.
Well, let me respond, please, why 40 pages? Because, you know, this is, you have to understand that we do have a number of Saturday programs and after-school programs that are substantial in the district and that, of course, means that we have to list every single individual that is going to work on those programs. So, therefore, that's why it's 40 pages. I mean, if we, if we only have 10 people working on the program, you only get one page with 10 people on it. But go ahead, Ms. Ufrida. Ms. Ufrida will respond to your question.
Well, President Garcia is right. We have a lot of extra programs and those are reflected in these resolutions. We have, however, asked our legal department for an opinion about exactly what it is the duty of the board to approve. The rates that you are approving are all contractual. So, you could argue that we don't need to bring all of this stuff in front of the board for appointment. We're looking at what the legal requirement is and then, of course, the superintendent would share that opinion with you and the board could decide if they in fact want to view all of these if you're not in fact absolutely required to.
And then, one other question on, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is, it's to the board, but it is in reference to Resolution 323 and I do go back to my comments that I made last year and the comments that President DiClemente referenced this after, this evening. The issue for me is, is that parity in salaries. We have African-American women who are in the classrooms and as paraprofessionals making $9.33 an hour. We have black men who are sentries, who are making $10 an hour roughly, and I'm not specific about it, but roughly. The issue for me is parity and what do we value? These people, these individuals are on the front lines. Secretaries are not. And for the most part, those secretaries who are making $20 are all white females. And so, I do have a concern about that and I think that we have to be, we have to look at this issue from a notion what's called structural racism. Because I got some emails back, President Garcia, that says, well, you know, we took the civil service exam. Well, there's research that says that those things, there's, there's racism even in those civil service exams. And so, as a board, I think, and that's why it's important that we have a personnel committee of this board, that we have to look at what is fair for not only white females, but also black females and black men. Because it appears that if you're white in this district and if you're female primarily, that you benefit most in terms of income than if you're black and if you're male. Thank you, President Garcia.
We're going to go, okay, one more, one more comment from Commissioner Powell and then we'll go on to vote.
I just have a suggestion with regard to the 40-page resolution, that there are natural breakpoints here where, for instance, if all of our extended day and Saturday programs were listed, I think it would still probably exceed 30 pages, but at least at that point, we're voting up or down on whether we agree with Saturday and extended day programs. In point of fact, it would be highly discriminatory of us to try to pick and choose individual teachers amongst that list and say, yes, I want to allow this person to work overtime, but no, I don't want to allow that person to work overtime. Now, withstanding that, Commissioner Elliott does have a point about mixing a whole, a vast array of separate programs into one resolution and it might be meaningful feedback from the board to be able to say yes or no in support or against a particular program.
Because of all the comments that we have received, I'm, we're going to start, I'm going to make it a roll call vote and I'm going to start at my right with regretfully, Commissioner Brennan. Yes or no?
This is resolutions? I'm sorry.
The resolutions, this will be resolutions 301 through 328.
Okay. Yes on all of them except for 301, 302, and 303.
Okay. Commissioner Elliott?
No on 301, 302, 306, 318, 319, 320, 321, and 323.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes to all.
Commissioner Thompson?
I vote aye.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. President. No to 301, 302, 303, and 305, which Commissioner Brennan should know was added to our materials this afternoon. So, you may have not seen that additional resolution.
That's my lapse, but thank you.
Thank you. Next to everything else, Mr. President.
I vote aye for all except for 318, that I have to abstain because two of my family members are teachers and working on one particular program there. So, the ayes have it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 329 through 340.
So moved.
Second.
Then second, any questions?
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted, as a comment, rather, I wanted to thank Vincent Carfagna for clarifying something that I really would have continued to misunderstand the data regarding the, Vinnie, where are you? The information regarding minority contractors. If you look at the answer to the question, I labored under the false impression that this represented the number of minorities in the company. It did not. That percentage that folks see in the resolutions, that does not, is not representative of the number of minorities in the company, rather, the number of minorities working on that job. Is that right? Is that right, Mr. Superintendent?
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
President Garcia?
Commissioner Elliott?
And just to announce, in reference to, the board had some concerns about contracting with persons of color and the superintendent has indicated to us that he will come with a presentation with that. a presentation with that next month, I believe. So that's gonna be on the agenda for next month.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Washington? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 341 through 343, budget and finance resolutions.
So moved.
So moved. And second, any questions? These are the resolutions that the Finance Committee is recommending to the board. No question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Ms. Washington?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 344 through 346. These are procurement and supply resolutions. Please, I'll entertain a motion for that. Is there more? It's been moved?
Second.
And second, thank you. My, my assistant here is sleeping.
Gotta keep him in his toes.
Any questions? No questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 347, which is information and technology.
So moved.
It's been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Any question? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 348 through 354.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. And second, any questions?
Only to thank the folks that have donated, I believe, in resolutions 352, 353, and 354. Early holiday gifts are always nice, so thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
350?
You oppose 350?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we come to the question of the hour. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions 355, which is to authorize the president to sign a, to sign a contract with Mr. John Claude Bissell so he can become superintendent of the Rochester City School District.
So moved.
So moved. It's been properly moved. And second, I'm, I'm going to take a roll call vote.
Any questions? Or statements?
Make your statement during roll call.
I'll, I'll allow you to make a short, brief, two-second statement.
No, that ain't gonna work.
During the roll call. Ms. Washington, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
The only statement I have on this, on President Garcia, is 45 minutes long. Will that be all right?
That will be fine, Mr. Brennan.
Worked so hard, but no. Aye, I vote aye.
You vote aye?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Ms. Elliott?
Commissioner to you.
Commissioner Elliott?
Let me, let me say that my criticism of my colleagues is that I believe that we rushed into this process. I, I think that we had a person who, in fact, I didn't support from the outset, believe it or not. But one of the things that I come on this board is with that I care about this community, care about these children. So politics aside and all of that, I saw in Dr. Kayla that he loved these children, as many of you may know. Yeah, I'm thinking he's a white person from the suburbs, have no clue about urban education. But he proved me wrong. And you, we have the mayor's office, we have the business community, we have the religious community, we have the black community, we have the entire community that is supportive of Dr. Kayla. And then for us to just say, oh, we don't want him, you know, we'll get this person. Now, it says to me that there must be something else going on that we want to get rid of this person, and we don't want to do the right thing. Now, I have nothing against Mr. Bizzard, nothing. It may be the same case with Dr. Kayla. I may have to come and say that I'm wrong about Dr. Bizzard. But the fact is, we're rushing this thing, and he's got a learning curve, a learning curve. And he can be bamboozled. Dr. Kayla was not able to, and he made some, he made some unpopular decisions on behalf of the children and the families of this community. And to stop that, I think that we're being, as a board, irresponsible. Now...
Yes or no, Commissioner Elliott?
I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to err on the side of caution and vote, no, no, I'm gonna vote yes for Dr. Bizzard. But you got to prove it to me, because you're gonna be stepping in to some very big shoes. And I'm here to tell you, you've seen me operate tonight. If you don't do for my kids what this man has done, you've got this community to respond to. But my vote is yes.
I'm, I'm gonna start on the other end. Commissioner White?
I think, Commissioner Elliott and I do agree on some occasions. I think this is one of the occasions we agree. I think she's gonna be proven wrong, just like she was with Dr. Cala.
All right.
And, and I, I don't think it takes much to look at this man, the same way we looked at Dr. Cala, and see someone who cares for children, who cares for people. And, and we ought to make sure he has every opportunity to have our support, our endorsement, and he has mine at least, and I think he has everybody else's. Double yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I think the board found itself in a very enviable position to have Dr. Cala agreeing to stay on board until we saw the process through in the event we would need to ask him to stay. And then we also took the opportunity to begin a process that most of us felt it was important to finish. Now, in my case, I think we had some strong candidates, and I was not involved in the consensus decision to support Mr. Bizzard. But that doesn't change the fact that I will vote yes for him because I think he, he brings a wealth of experience. From the interview process, there are a number of, of issues that you spoke to that resonate very much with me. And based on my eight years on the board, I know we'll, we'll respond well to the communities and the children's and the district's needs. So I have no problem supporting you. I don't have any misgivings about having seen the process through. I think it would have been irresponsible of us to have aborted the process, especially when we knew that if we had not settled on a candidate, that we had Dr. Cala to fall back on, so to speak. So I think we had the best of both worlds. I think it was the appropriate thing for us to complete the process, and I'm pleased with how it was, for the most part, conducted. And I'm happy to cast an aye vote for Mr. Bizzard.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
I have a lot of thoughts floating through my head, and as usual, I weigh the question of whether to grandstand and pontificate and whether, or whether to just cast my vote. I'll simply say, welcome, Mr. Bizzard. You have my vote.
Commissioner Evans?
Let me say that I've been eating, living, breathing this superintendent thing for the last year. It's good to see it come to a conclusion. But let me say that the superintendent is only as strong as the board. And...
You shouldn't have said that.
And, and it is important, and I think that it is important that this board set an example for, for, for this community and, and for the students in this community.
He better leave now. Sorry, President Garcia.
So I, I think that it's important that this board set an example for the students in this, in this district and for the students in this community. And if we expect any superintendent to do a good job, it's important that the board help create an environment to make sure that that happens. And that, and that means analyzing what we do and what we think is important. I think that Mr. Bizzard would do a great job in working with this board, but I, but I think that it's important that we, as board members, understand that this community looks to us for leadership, and it's important that we show that, and show that we are, we are going to be leaders and positive leaders, and really set an example for the students in this district. And sometimes I don't think that we, we do that. But John Claude Bizzard definitely has my support. I vote yes.
When we interviewed Dr. Cala, we, we asked him some very tough questions, but he gave an answer to one question in particular that made me vote for him immediately, and I, and I didn't wave. I mean, he, he was my candidate to become interim superintendent. He said that he viewed his job to be that of a person who will take care of all the problems, or as many as he could, as many of the problems that the district had, and he would take care of those problems and resolve them, so that the person who followed him into the position could concentrate on doing the job and didn't have to deal with those problems. And, and I really wanted somebody like that. I wanted somebody to come in and, and hit the ground running and do whatever was necessary to make sure that, that the next person, whomever that person happened to be, would could hit the ground running. Bill Cala is an exemplary individual. I, I admire him greatly. But he did say to me also that he wasn't looking for the permanent job, and that's why he took the interim position. So I had no, I, I have no negative things to say about the process or, or our choice. I think we made the right choice when we picked Bill Cala to become interim superintendent, and I think, I think we're making the right choice by selecting John Claude Bizzard. Our next, my next choice would have been Tim Mainz, and he made, he's a person who's very sensitive to this community. But I think Mr. Bizzard, his experience and, and his track record will, will prove to this district that he's a capable individual. So welcome to the Rochester City School District, Mr. Bizzard. I will give you some time to say a few words, please.
We really wanna say thank you. Thank you for your vote of confidence, and thank you for being here tonight. The one promise that I will make to, to you and to the kids of this city is that I will wake every morning, make to make sure that they are successful, to ready for what comes after high school. It will become my life's work, will become my work day and night, and I will, will guarantee results. Thank you.
Following, immediately following the board meeting, we were gonna have a little signing ceremony there on that table. Mr. Bizzard and I will sign the contract, so he will, in fact, become superintendent starting in, in January. We'll continue with our agenda, and the next item on the agenda, our speakers on other than agenda items. We have no old unfinished business, we have no new business. We have five speakers. Each speaker has three minutes. Again, I will ask you to state your position within those three minutes, and when the bell rings, please conclude your remarks immediately and give an opportunity to the next person. The first person on the list is Mr. Antonio Vargas Cagina. Mr. Antonio Vargas Cagina. He's a student, and he's going to be speaking about horses. Antonio Vargas Cagina, and she's a parent, again, about a horse's friend. She's not gonna speak. Mr. Ron Rain, and he's going to speak about work, peace, and curriculum. Mr. Rain, that's, that's a first. Ms. Emma Fleming, a staff person, and she's going to be speaking about No Child Left Behind.
Wow, apparently not.
I guess not. Mr. Arthur Stoller, and he's going to be speaking about emergency contacts for students. Mr. Stoller.
They probably, President Garcia didn't want me to come after him, so they all left.
I don't think I want you coming after me, though.
You don't. You sure don't. It would not be pretty.
Especially for casual onlookers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Again, my name is Art Stoller. I do have a master's degree in education. I'm a certified teacher by the State of New York. I'm currently, I think, a talented, experienced per diem substitute teacher in the Rochester City School District, having taught in almost every school, in almost every grade level, in almost every subject. Today, I had the unique experience of teaching pre-K at Number 14 School, and did I love it? I like to think that I have made a very positive academic and behavioral impact to hundreds of children. My other life is that I am a devoted family man and committed to helping to improve every phase of Nazir McDonald's academic and social life. Nazir stays most weekends with me and his grandmother. Both of us spend endless time periods in our home and community library assisting Nazir with every phase of his school life. For the record, Nazir is my grandson, is a first-grade student at Number 54 School. Having worked voluntarily with Marvelous Parent Community Involvement Program, I'm sure you realize the dire need for not only parents, but grandparents and other devoted relatives to extend themselves to our city children to be supportive mentors to them. I'm here because I sincerely hope that he can help me with my problem. Nazir lives with his mother, who is the custodial parent. But sadly, she's uneducated, severely lacks parenting skills, and suffers from the communicative and networking skills to neither support or for sure broaden Nazir's scholastic life. Because Nazir's mother has refused to put me on the school's emergency list, so that when I am either teaching at Number 54 School, or when I have other free academic time to both observe my grandson in a school setting and correspondingly connect with his teacher to check on his scholastic status, et cetera, unfortunately, by the awful district ruling, I'm totally locked out. As you are seeing the whole picture now, not only am I locked out of Nazir's scholastic life, but maybe hundreds of other family members, like myself, are rejected from possibly making a dynamic difference to the children and grandchildren they so dearly love. Dr. Cala, school board members, you need to emphatically change this district rule. Your failure to do so is drastically destroying the potential for city students from gaining the valuable academic support from family members they so desperately deserve. On previous occasions, I have spoken to some of you before suggesting possible solutions to other pressing Rochester City School District problems. To this date, I have yet to hear any type of response. Please, this time, give me the professional courtesy for a prompt reply to this suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you for your, for your comments. I would just make one broad comment here, and that is that we have some legal responsibilities to abide by New York State laws regarding who has access to children in our schools. This is not directed to you, so you may sit down. It's just a general comment, just so that people are aware of that. The next meeting of the Board of, of the Board of Education, it will be on December 20, 2007, at 6:30, right here in this room. If you need to look at any information, including the new copy of the superintendent's contract, it will be on the website, www.rscsdk12.org. Mr. Bizzard, if you join me, will sign your contract, and thank you for attending the board meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll need a motion to adjourn. One second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fun for me?
Yeah.
We have to sign two copies.
Fun for me?
Yep.
Where's our superintendent?
I always rest down.
I want to get out of this picture. I want to get out of the picture.
We have to sign two copies.
Hello?
Hi. You can hide your hat.
Stand behind me.
You can be my second head.
No, no, careful.
Oh, my abomado.
I did, actually. I was way ahead of you.
All of you at Fisher?
He's my first girl in our class.
Did you talk to your editor?
Are you all, all of you are interested in teaching?
They should check before they make general...
I knew exactly what I was doing.
I had at least time to mess with it.
That's what I wanted to do, because I've tried to talk to him before, and, you know, decided to do it this way. I'm going to say what I need to say on behalf of my community.
I was just from the Queen Mother in my ear going, "What are you saying?"
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Which one? It's right here. Okay.
Where are you all interested in?
I think it's...
Did you talk to your editor?
Are you all, all of you are interested in teaching?
They should check before they make general...
I knew exactly what I was doing.
I had at least time to mess with it.
That's what I wanted to do, because I've tried to talk to him before, and, you know, decided to do it this way.
I'm going to say what I need to say on behalf of my community.
I was just from the Queen Mother in my ear going, "What are you saying?"
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Which one? It's right here.
Where are you all interested in?
I think it's...
Did you talk to your editor?
Are you all, all of you are interested in teaching?
They should check before they make general...
I knew exactly what I was doing.
I had at least time to mess with it.
That's what I wanted to do, because I've tried to talk to him before, and, you know, decided to do it this way.
I'm going to say what I need to say on behalf of my community.
I was just from the Queen Mother in my ear going, "What are you saying?"
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Which one? It's right here.
Okay.
Where are you all interested in?
I think it's...
Did you talk to your editor?
Are you all, all of you are interested in teaching?
They should check before they make general...
I knew exactly what I was doing.
I had at least time to mess with it.
That's what I wanted to do, because I've tried to talk to him before, and, you know, decided to do it this way.
I'm going to say what I need to say on behalf of my community.
I was just from the Queen Mother in my ear going, "What are you saying?"
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Which one?